If we're gonna go live. Even you, Jim. All right. Good afternoon. This is the town of Dewey Beach Monthly Town Commissioners Meeting at the Dewey Beach Life Saving Station and virtual. This meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube. This is Friday, April 8th, 2022 at 4:00 PM. And I'm going to convene the Town Commissioners Meeting. First item is adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion, second.
Any, any discussion on any changes? Not seeing any, we'll go to a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 That passes, the agenda has been adopted. Opening ceremonies, let's please stand for the Pledge of Lees. Pledge of Lees, do the flag, the United States of America, two different public, which stands, one nation, under God, due to his deliverings, justice for all. All right. Next item is for roll call. I'll ask for the commissioners to, to say if they're here or not. Commissioner Bauer.
Present.
Commissioner Jazinski.
Here.
Commissioner Gibbons.
Here.
Commissioner Persinger.
On Zoom, present.
And myself, Bill Stevens is here. We also have members of the Town Hall with us present up top as well as in the, in the, in the meeting room. We'll move on to updates, announcements, Town Manager, Dagsworthy Avenue Bayside Project.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna go through a number of different projects, but yeah, for Dagsworthy, I'd like to thank Senator Ernie Lopez for the funding for the Dagsworthy project. We can bring that up, take the before and after photo real quick. It is done. We also had some funding where we could take away a low spot on the road. Where now it's actually, there's no water state, if you have some, bring those up, that would be great. There, that's what it looked like, next slide, please. That's what it looks like now, all the way down to the bed. So it was a great job, and again, I'd like to thank Senator Lopez for that. The Center Island project, we go to the next slide, is moving along. Basically, everything is done with the exception of putting in the plants. They'll put in approximately 800 plants next week as they get those in. This is Del Dot, we've worked with them, they're doing the one-on-one A project at this time, next slide, please. This is New Orleans Street, this is a low spot on the street, I'm working with Del Dot to try to get funds, we could get the drainage off the street and maybe repaint New Orleans Streets, but a continuous problem since I've gotten here, next slide, please. This is Van Dyke Street, so they put additional sand on Van Dyke Street this past week. Denrec gave them the permit for it, they went ahead and did it. My concern is still about the drainage, you go to the next slide, please.
And they are?
Drainage.
You said they, you said they had, they got the permit.
I'm trying to get DVE, work with them, they promised that we'll come up with a solution for that, but the more sand they add to the beach, the worse it gets.
Yep.
And I've talked to Denrec about it, but the beach itself looks beautiful, as you can see there, next slide, please. This is some issues around town, a lot of these boxes like this that are owned by Verizon are trying to get them to address those, and you can take them out, or at least maintain them, because they're all over the place, there's wires sticking out, that looks terrible, next slide, please. This, we're continuing with the vinyl post from Collins Street, we're down to West Street now, we're either four on each side or three on each side, next slide, please. This berm, we're gonna take the trees out that are not supposed to be on this berm, they're mainly the cherry trees, and some of the others, we're gonna take those down and replant that with beech grass. What's happening here is the roots are getting into the berm itself, breaking the berm up, and within a number of years, that's gonna cause some structural problems for the berm, so that project will go on in the next two weeks, next slide, please. This is a project down on Carolina Street, we're gonna clear that area out, this is the left side down on the dune, we're gonna take that back about 10 feet, put a snow fence in there. Some folks down on Carolina Street are donating a bicycle rack for that end of the street, we're gonna put it in here and clean it up, so then we'll have, we have the project down on Van Dyke, we have the project on Bellevue, and now we have a project down in Carolina. Each kind of section of the town is, is having a project. If anybody's out there that's interested, at their end of the street, please contact me, we're happy to work with you, try to get something done.
And Bill, this will be similar to what the end of Bellevue looks like right now?
Yeah, Van Dyke, Bellevue, or what we're gonna be doing here at Carolina Street, next slide, please. This is the work being done on Bayard Avenue by SPS, Remington and Vernon, they're here, they're actually relining the pipe, this is a picture from today, next slide, please. This is the device they're putting in further down the pipe, once they get the water out, they'll be able to run this down, this is a hammer, next slide, please. And this is the truck that takes the water out, so they're doing that today, and they, they were gonna get half that pipe relined today, and they're gonna start the other half next week. Next slide. Lifeguard tryouts have been very successful so far, we've had two of them, we've had 14 people try out for 10 slots, and we have a tryout this weekend, next slide. That's it, so what I would ask at this time is, Jim, give an update on Verizon.
Let me read the slide. Matt, so on March 29th, Bill and I met with Bob McGuck, who was the government liaison. He went through the town, he looked at all the wireless.
Could you go up a little?
I was saying, Steve, can you go up? Sorry. I was curious if you could hear Gary, thank you for bringing that up.
Sure. There we go.
I'm good.
Okay, on March 29th, Bill and I met with Bob McGuck, and he represented Verizon, he is the government liaison. We went through the town, we observed all the poles that Verizon has wireless facilities attached to them. On April 5th and April 7th, we received two annual plans, which basically depict maps of where the wireless communication poles are. We were a little taken back, we assumed we would have an actual written plan in addition to that, but having had a discussion with CTC, our consultant, that is very typical of how these plans are submitted. We also had a conference call with CTC just to go over what our expectations are of annual plans. Now, if we get the slide up, and for those of us who are here, as you can see on the, on the maps, there are five nodes that are up by the ocean, Node 2, Node 1, Node 20, 32, and 33. They represent Collins Street, St. Louis Street, Clayton Street, Rodney Avenue, and Collins Avenue. And right below those nodes, you will see a relocation, that is a proposed relocation of where they, they may be cited. Now, this is just a proposed, there is no obligation on the town's part to take any of this, and we plan, as soon as we get the application submitted, we will discuss this with CTC. Below that, on nodes 30, 21, 28, 22, 27, and 21, these are proposed for modifications, not relocations. Those also require an application to the town for modification, which means that they are planning actually to change antennas in some of the boxes. Now.
So those are existing poles?
Those are, these are all existing poles, the relocations are non-existent. We have approached, we approached Bob, we asked for, this is Bob McGuck, and for when do you plan to start? They had no idea, he had no personal idea as to when. We're not holding up any applications, we're not a problem as far as receiving them and processing, and we have received nothing to date. The modifications, as I understand it, will be the first that are to go. The, the other option that they have is to give us the, the relocation. Now, the relocation polls, these were an agreement that was submitted between Verizon, I believe, as part of a settlement with Mr. Pyres. And they're just proposed, so we'll look at those, and they will all go through the ordinance requirements. Any questions?
Yeah. Has Verizon said which 5G technology they're going to be using on these relocated poles?
No, we've, we've had no communication.
So?
The most current or the one that was, you know, six, seven months ago.
Right. What some of the industry rags have been talking about in the last few months is Verizon might be like giving up on the, I think it's called millimeter wave, the really short-range 5G, that they might be kind of giving up on it. And the whole reason they've said they need to have these things so close to the beach is because they're using that technology. So I would like to see as part of their plans that specify exactly which 5G technology they're putting on the poles.
Well, we'll obviously take a look at that, and, you know, the, the ordinance does require them to move them, first option is to move them by the right one, and we'll follow through that.
Thank you. Any other questions from Mr. Deves? Gary, I can't see you.
No, no questions.
Okay. Next item.
Just a, real quick, so for the Town Hall Police Station, everybody should have gotten the information that the credentials for the three firms, their experiences, everything is on the town website. You can go to that to look at the background on all three, and then it'll be up to the mayor when it's scheduled for those three firms to do their presentations to the commission. Okay, and they're just initial proposals for you to look at, and then we'll choose one of the architect firms, and then from there, we can have public hearings, we can do whatever we need to do, workshops, whatever it is, to kind of go, go from there for what we're looking for with the police station and the, in the Town Hall. At this time, I just asked if Ashley would come up real quick and just give an update on, on our federal funding, all our grants.
So we applied for two fiscal year 2023 congressional directed spending request applications, they were submitted yesterday, one was to Senator Coons' office, the other was to Senator Carper's office. For hopeful, we're asking for 6 million, not sure that we'll get that full amount, but even any amount from each of them would be helpful for that. Today, I submitted a grant to try to get the deck of the life-saving station covered, hopefully, we don't have to use town funding for that, but that can be up to $5,000. And then I'm looking at Outdoor Recreation Parks and Trail Program Grant that's available right now, the pre-application is due by May 9th, and that would be for Sunset Park to help fix up that area. And then we submitted a stormwater project grant for $478,000 that was submitted on 3/2. We're about three to four weeks out from hearing the results of that, so we'll be sure to keep everyone posted once we hear any update for that one as well.
What is the timing on the congressional grants that we would hear back, or?
So it's, it goes to the internal office now, Senator Coons is going to review them, I did speak to someone there today, and they said that our application does look very favorable. So they think that we'll get something, we're just not sure what that will be yet.
The fiscal year for the government, so fiscal year starts October 1st, so if they go ahead and approve it, and not have a continuing resolution like they've done over the last couple of years, it could be approved soon.
We said decisions are gonna be made at Coons' office four to six weeks from now, then they're gonna go to the Appropriations Committee by summer, like late spring, and then the final decisions will be made in June, early July. But with their fiscal year ending on 9/30, we should have an answer with everything, they said likely by December, last year it went to February, but they don't anticipate it going all the way to February this year.
I think it's great that we're getting, we have both those grants in with both senators, is there, do you know if there's additional opportunities at the state level from the governor's perspective, or are there other, other ways to get into those, those appropriations?
I'll have to look into that further, I don't know if the top.
Again, that'd be great. Okay. All right. Any questions?
Yeah, thanks, Ashley.
Thanks, Ashley.
That's all I have.
Okay. We have updates on HB, H233 regarding municipal elections. I don't have an update on that for right now, I don't know if, I, when, based upon our last conversation with Lambo, we know that this is not an implementation until 2024. So we'll, we've got some time to figure out how that's gonna affect us. With no other updates and announcements, I'll move to committee reports. Gary, do you want to start off with your committees?
Yeah, just to, climate change is meeting tomorrow at 10:00 AM, and their, their agenda is posted, so they're, they're ready to go. One thing that has come up, the Institute for Public Administration at University of Delaware has a course coming up, it's a one-day session on flood-ready communities, or creating flood-ready communities. I took this same session three or four years ago, it's really very good, I've suggested to the committee chair that, that he consider it, and perhaps, you know, another member of the, of the committee consider it as well. It's only $55 for, for the session, and I would hope that the town would consider supporting the cost of that, if there are, you know, one or more members that would like to be a part of it, it really is on point for this committee. The Charter and Code Committee meets on, on Monday, hopefully, we'll have some representatives in the town to, to join us at that meeting, they meet at 6 o'clock. And, you know, we'll just continue to slog through things and hopefully come up with some recommendations in, in the near future. That's it.
Thank you, Gary, Town Manager.
So thank you, Commissioner Persinger, so Jim Tyler is gonna, he's requested to attend that, and I told him to work machine on reimbursement for the funding and the travel.
Okay, great. I'll go second from a, from a budget perspective. The Budget and Finance Committee has not been able to meet mostly because of conflicting and competing schedules. I had a conversation with the Chair of that committee this past week, and unfortunately, he's, he's gonna step down as the Chair to see, because he can't dedicate the time at this point in time. He's fully dedicated to doing and being part, but the Chair's is a different requirement, so we'll be seeking a new Chair for the Budget and Finance, so if anyone has any suggestions, please send them my way, and we'll, and we'll see what we can do. Commissioner Jazinski, on yours, any updates for your committees?
On the Infrastructure Committee, yeah, there's a meeting on the 21st, the Center for Land Bays is gonna present update on the stormwater plans, and there's gonna be a general discussion of the overall town infrastructure needs. Kind of to the goal we gave them of starting to kind of come up with, what are we really gonna need long-term funding for the things that they want to do?
Great. Commissioner Gibbons?
The Investment Committee is going to meet on April 14th, and the meeting has been posted on the town website, so we're going as scheduled.
Wonderful. And Commissioner Bauer?
Kate, can you pop that up on the screen? So, you know, we've been talking about some sort of landmark in Dewey that people can take their sunset pictures with and all, and fortunately, Senator Lopez is generously giving us some money to pay for that, so it won't cost us anything. Tried to come up with a design, checked with some people to see what looks, you know, trying to keep the Baywalk, you know, a classier looking, look that, that it is. And so that's what we came up with, the idea is to have Dewey Beach and the town logo in, in between the words Dewey and Beach, and then on the backside of it, put the Dewey Beach, so if you're coming in via boat, you're gonna see Dewey Beach on that side as well. So as far as, as far as the design goes, I mean, that's just a rough draft, that might not be exactly what it looks like, but I wanted to show you something, I think it looks pretty good, and I'm gonna get the final numbers. I don't know if we need to have a meeting on it, because we're not gonna spend any town money on it, if, unless anybody has any objections to it, we'll just get it done and get it installed in the next few weeks, so.
It's gonna be.
It frees a good number, so I have no objection to the free part of that, and then also.
Should there be any consistency with the both signs that are coming in and out of Dewey on Highway 1, just a thought process to bring back to the, from, to the committee?
Yeah, we can, can go with that logo as well.
Yeah, it's a similar color, I think, is what we call it.
Peach for some reason.
Yeah, that's the same colors as the TJ sign.
That's what it is.
We kept with the aqua and the teal and, and the blue.
This, that, we're all pointing to different things, yes, but I think that's gonna be a lovely frame for the Instagram pictures, and when the tree is up in the holidays, it's gonna be.
That'll be.
Framing it, love it.
Great.
And also I have a meeting coming up with the Delaware Discovery Trails at 2 o'clock on the 26th, and that's to discuss, they have some funding available because they're trying to create landmarks for the state, and this would be some funding via them. And I'd like to try to do something on the ocean side too, because I think the, the thing that we differentiate us from a lot of other towns is we have the sunrise and the sunset. So try to have something on the sunset side of it for that, and maybe something on the ocean side. So I'll keep you posted after that meeting, see what's, what's available, and try not to spend any of our money, so we'll use other people's money.
You do a good job of that, thank you. All right, moving on to the next element of our agenda is the approval of March 18th, 2022 Monthly Town Commissioner Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept them.
Second. Do I have any changes to the minutes? Not hearing any, all in favor say aye.
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 That passed unanimously, and we'll move on to the action items within our agenda. Number one is to see what's the next steps regarding the Alderman Court Number 36, determine if a charter changes desire to continue to house, to continue to house the Alderman Court within the town or refer the court to out of system. I've asked our town prosecutor, Brady, to be in attendance tonight for this meeting. The, the situation is our wonderful, wonderful Alderman has submitted her resignation, but has committed to staying with us as, as we go through the process of finding, determining what the next steps are. So Commissioner Brady, can I ask you to give us an overview of, of your, of Alderman in the state of Delaware, your thoughts on the Alderman in town of Dewey Beach?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, it was another board, they called me commissioner, it's all good. The Alderman Court was established in the original charter for the town of Dewey Beach in 1981. At that time, there were very active Alderman Courts in the beach towns and in some northern Newcastle County towns, and the court in the city of Newark. Since then, the legislature had a task force in 2000, and some of the results of the task force were as follows. Number one, there were some Aldermen putting people into jail. The Constitution said, in order for somebody to be put in jail by a judge, the judge has to be nominated by the governor and confirmed by the Senate. So at that point, all the Aldermen started being sent to the governor's office and to be filed with the Senate and voted upon. That was after they found that DUI second offense, something that had never been handled in Dewey Beach Court, was being done in the town of Newark, and they were putting people away for 60 days without the constitutional authority to do so. As part of that reform also, they passed it that if a town gives up their Alderman's Court, they can never get it back. These are two important things that I want to go through the history. Since then, the town has been served by many excellent Aldermen. And that's not supposed, I would say Alderwoman, but they're not under the town, town code that way, but they should be. But.
Alderperson.
As Alderperson, yeah, that's. As the town has been moving forward, there are some, the budget has increased, and I listed in that email, number of positions that are technically under the Alderman's Court. That includes the Alderman, and at one time, there were two Aldermen, there was the Alderman and the Assistant Alderman, the only other town with that was Newark. There was a court clerk, there is a security officer for the court, court bailiff, and the position of town prosecutor. In looking at that, the budget, I think, was about $171,000. And what was asked me to look at the cost effectiveness of having everything go to the Justice of the Peace Court for original service, as opposed to keeping it in the Alderman's Court. Here is what I found out from the Chief Magistrate, the Honorable Allen G. Davis. He is willing to absorb the Alderman's Court. They most recently did that with Bethany, and they've absorbed the trial function from the town of Newport. Newport, you can come in, plead guilty to the charge, pay the fine, or if you want a trial, your case goes to Court 10 of the JP Court. I call that the hybrid approach. Bethany eliminated all their criminal matters, and the only thing they're doing is parking tickets. They've also eliminated their civil offenses, according to Delaware Code, and put them to the JP Court also. Laurel still runs, and Rehoboth Beach still runs an active Alderman's Court, and the only other, Newark still runs an active Alderman's Court. Ironically, there are no Alderman's Courts left in Kent County. All of them have been absorbed into the Justice of the Peace Court system. One of the things that they looked at was, when they looked at, at the Alderman's Task Force, that there was no education or training requirements to be an Alderman, except a person learned in the law. That was a common law, what an Alderman was and what a magistrate was. Dewey Beach has been very fortunate that every Alderman has been a graduate of law school, and has been able to apply the law fairly in an appropriate manner. They've all gotten training when available with the Justice of the Peace Courts, and there have never been, to the best of my knowledge, any judicial complaints against the Alderman. The, that followed 1966, when the Justice of the Peace were made into a state system, and training requirements were put in. Before that, 1966, the Justice of the Peace sat in their house, rented their front offices to court, and you paid them the court fees, and that's how they got paid. So it's been trying to do as we've moved the law, to take it from a revenue generating thing for the individual, and turn it into a speedy process for the town to deal with matters. Justice of the Peace Court 2 is the closest Justice of the Peace Court to the town of Dewey Beach. It is currently located on Route 24, John J. Williams Highway, just off the intersection of Route 1 at the McDonald's. They are moving, and they are moving to Red Mill Pond north of Lewis, because their courthouse does not meet the requirements that the Supreme Court has issued for preparing and protecting victims and witnesses from interaction with defendants outside the courtroom. And that is what they've been doing, modifying the courts to have separate waiting areas. Our current court, unfortunately, does not have such a waiting area. But if the town decides that they want to keep the court, that's something that's gonna have to be thought about. We had an incident a couple of years ago where a prisoner broke through the wall of the cell, went through the court, knocked over the court chair, damaged the court, and ran out, and was tackled by officers down by the bed. That showed at that point that the court was not properly secure, there were temporary measures put in place, and then COVID hit, which put additional measures. And now the courts want you to have Plexiglas protection between the witness area and the judge, things that need to be considered if the town wants to retain a court. Because there will be concerns that, does this comply? The court clerk is a very dedicated official, she, we are fortunate to have a retired judicial manager of the Justice of the Peace Courts, serving as the court clerk. And she does an excellent job, and when there is an issue, she doesn't hesitate to call me in the hospital, it doesn't matter, it's. Lots of people found out that my local number went right through to Philadelphia Hospital, I spent 39 days in the spring. So if it goes to the JP Courts, the issues that came up from the police side, which the chief can also address if you want, is the time that the court is open. How are you gonna be able to protect the town if many officers are at that court for trial? Right now, because the court is right near the police station, they just walk over and come back, it's not them going out of town. But imagine a trial on July 3rd in the summer at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, with the traffic we usually see on the 4th of July weekend, having the vehicle have to go up to Red Mill Pond, and then get stuck in traffic, trying to get back to the town of Dewey Beach. If an incident happened and there were a loss of officers because they were outside of town, that is a concern. There is some helpful nature though with the courts, in talking to the Chief Magistrate. In talking to the Chief Magistrate, they use what's called a scheduling process. If the town transmits this work schedule of the officer, they try and set the trials on that date. The other thing that they do differently than the Alderman's Court is police prosecution. At the Alderman's Court level here, an arraignment is held after being scheduled by the court clerk, and the individuals come in and meet with the judge, and the judge explains their options, including probation before judgment or any other diversion that's appropriate under the code for Dewey Beach and under the state code. In the JP Court system, you have to provide a police officer to the court to meet with that individual at what's called a "call the calendar." That police officer has to be a supervisory police officer, such as a sergeant or a lieutenant, to be able to sit there for three hours and meet with those people. They come in, they schedule all those cases at that point. So they come in, talk to the officers. Some of the cases are resolved. For example, if someone is charged with nine over or 15 over, they may drop it to five over, and the person pleases it out right there. When a person pleases out a case in the Alderman's Court, the town gets the ticket revenue, the court fees, and the security fee. A case that goes to the Justice of the Peace Court or the Court of Common Pleas, the town will get the violation fee, but will not get the court fee or the security fee. Right now, we also collect other assessments for the state, and we transmit that money on a regular basis to the state. So the options that are there. And the other concern is that the Justice of the Peace Court wants to get electronic tickets. Electronic tickets are available in the police car or in the van, but we don't have handheld units yet for the seasonal officers. But at least one, and sometimes two seasonal officers are operating a van. The van could be equipped with a computer, and the tickets could be generated that way. The other thing that you already have in place is you have parking electronic handheld ticket units, which could get a program to put in the town ordinances, and those tickets could be done that way and transmitted to a court. And if, like, we transmit the parking tickets to the parking folks here, and then it generates the necessary information. 2020 and 2021 are statistically tough to look at because the state said, "Don't write tickets because you don't want to bring people to court during COVID." And although we kept her honor busy during COVID and last year, the numbers I think you need to look at have to include 2019, because that was the last summer of full enforcement. And I'm not saying we didn't enforce, but I think sometimes I saw them go back to what the 60s and 70s used to have, which was called "street corner justice." You do it again, I'm going to write you a ticket, so get out of here and go home. There are a lot of questions. So there are some things, if you want to look at, do a full study, because honestly, I was able to knock this out in just a few days, calling a lot of people, trying to get that email prepared to be comprehensive, to have some talking points for discussion. Number one, if you name, have a recruitment for an Alderman, I think you need to put in a limited term. And I say "limited term" because in the past, they've been appointed for a two-year term, and they stay on until they're reappointed. Instead of committing to two years, many other towns do at the pleasure of the mayor or at the pleasure of the mayor and commissioners. With the notice in there, it's limited term, and at the pleasure of the mayor and commissioners, this will avoid you from having to pay unemployment if you terminate because you've closed the courts. Just trying to read all the stuff under Delaware law. Second, they were saying, "Well, I thought this would be a lifetime appointment like Justice Brown got two days ago." The only thing in lifetime I found is taxes. Everything else has to be renewed on a regular basis. That's basically the end of my presentation. I did that because if I look at my notes, I'll probably look and say, "I forgot that." But I'm open to any questions you want, and if you want my total recommendation, I'll give you that.
Mr. Brady, we appreciate your time and the level of depth of information that you just provided. There are, I'm going to open up the commissioners for any questions in a second, but I, you know, one of the things that I, that does resonate is that is true, is that it is part of our charter. And any change to the current fact, any change to the current process would require a charter change, which is not an easy task for us to just accomplish. That's why this was a discuss this afternoon. The other thing is that, you know, while my first step was to understand the financial implications of a change in organizational structure, I understand now that, you know, from the conversations we've had this week, both the operational, from a police standpoint, you can resource in terms of the timing, especially taking the police off the streets and having them to go what will be much more difficult spot for the Justice of Peace Court. So with that being said, though, I will open it up to the other commissioners for any questions. Commissioner Zenzinski.
Sure, I have a couple of things. First, it's just a comment that I appreciated the excellent overview. We need to also keep in mind what I'd call the convenience for our town's visitors in this whole process, because I don't want us to be in a situation where if someone gets a ticket and they think they were unjustly given a parking ticket, that they feel like it's administratively very challenging to challenge it. And that would kind of be one example of something like that. So my question-
Every time, right?
What's that?
That's every time, right? Every parking ticket's challenged.
My point is, I just think it shouldn't be too hard for people to do it. So you had mentioned parking tickets. You know, obviously, there's a lot of volume in the Alderman Court for parking tickets. What are some of the other high-volume things in terms of the activities where there are just a lot of hearings in the court?
I, without trying to put the judge on the spot, my understanding in reviewing tickets is there's been disorderly dwelling, disorderly conduct, urinating in public, drinking in public. And, you know, there's one ordinance I never put in the book when we redid it again, stupid in public. And there was a reason that the court did not handle that charge, because that would just cover too many people at last call. But, and disorderly conduct includes fighting, because we have people fighting over the line to get the slices after 1:00 AM. We tried to streamline it, but I think that would be top five or six.
Okay.
Or all the charges.
Okay.
No charges, they're all giving, so everyone will come in, or they'll be zoomed in.
Okay.
Or that initial. And should they want to proceed through the trial, they can come back with five. And if they want to be transferred, they can.
So when you talked about the, what I'll just call the expensive requirements for a proper Alderman's Court, do those requirements apply to everything or just certain types of cases?
Oh, please. Chief Justice, without a need it, with following the violence against women's that all courtrooms after 2000 and renovations would have separate victim and witness areas away from the defendant. Right now, for many years, we had everybody sit out on the bench outside, and we mixed everybody along. And that's not always the best way to do it. The court has very, been very contingent of that and has tried to put victims in one area, witnesses in another area.
Yeah, I understand. My thought process, though, is for stuff like parking tickets. Are, is that a requirement for something like parking tickets?
No.
Okay, yeah. So, so I guess what my question is, and you don't have to answer right now, is do we potentially have the option to take the things that don't require a more robust courtroom environment in terms of physical instructor and personnel, and say that those things could be handled locally, but things that require more of the infrastructure can't be handled in our own courtroom? That's, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
That is what Bethany Beach has done now.
Okay.
The only thing Bethany Beach has kept is their parking for their Alderman, and everything else has been moved to Court 3, as I understand it, the way they did the mat.
And how long do we have to figure this out?
Well, the way it is is this. As the mayor just stated, you need to have a charter change is done. Understanding the timing, this is now the second week of April, to get a charter change through with the budget, the bond bill, and the other items they're trying to do this year may be difficult before the end of June. So this, I believe, the short-term solution, I believe, is to advertise for an Alderman. Probably not as good as the one we have now, and I'll miss her. She, when she gave me a legal thing to look at, she gave me really good ones.
Okay.
The second thing is to look at, is there anything we can do through an ordinance that would allow someone to do a, we, it's called the Voluntary Assessment Center in Dover, and for a speeding ticket, but also for a disorderly conduct ticket, certain things you can mail in, apply a cost. And the question is, would that be helpful?
Not voluntary assessment. I can't throw them.
Right. That's what, what I was saying was, can we set up our own voluntary assessment center?
Do.
Oh.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, I do want to, we do have Gary online, and I want to make sure that none of this gets lost from a conversational standpoint. What I, what I'm hearing, what I believe to be true, is that we don't have, not doing anything tonight in terms of a decision. We're continuing as is. Our, our wonderful Alderman has, will be supporting us until we have an appointment. So we find the person until they are appointed by Senate, I believe.
It could take a couple of years.
And it's a couple of years. The point of bringing it up to, to, in this manner, is to understand that there are alternatives that we can do from a charter standpoint, or alternatives that we can do as we move forward in terms of what type of offenses refer the Alderman. But also important to remember, as we do move forward with this new town hall, it's, it is a requirement, especially since we wouldn't be grandfathered in. Those restrictions in terms of Plexiglas and protection will have to be in there. But the one thing that I think that Mr. Brady said, that I just don't want it to be lost, is that once this is gone, it's gone forever. So you can't bring it back. So I'd encourage us to, unless there's any disagreement, to move forward with the process that Mr. Brady's in terms of putting it out there, interviewing, going through of finding a new Alderman. Yes, Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, can I ask you a couple of questions, please?
Of course.
In, in the financial analysis that was included in the materials for today, are parking fines actually included in that, that, the revenue stream? I see traffic fines and ordinance fines.
No, sir.
Okay, so they're not included. I guess one of the questions I have is, I think Commissioner Zenzinski said it was obvious that there's a lot of parking fine activity within the Alderman Court, and I wonder how much there really is. I mean, my perception of parking fines generally is that people get them and they pay them without having to involve the court. So, you know, it would be nice to know, have a better idea of how things break down in terms of the level of burden for parking fines, other traffic fines, and, you know, civil versus criminal, that kind of thing.
Commissioner Persinger, I think it's a great idea, and what we'll do is we'll pull together the metrics as we go to, if you'd like to come up and-
Really?
Yeah, Linda, can we get on the microphone?
Can you come up here, just so Gary can hear you? Commissioner Persinger, I mean.
Okay. First thing, basically.
So with respect to parking appeals, last year during COVID, there were 1,057 parking appeals. Those were split between the parking department and us because we were doing them online on a first level. So a first-level review to see if there were administrative problems, if it was a clear violation, a determination would be made, and the parker could escalate for a second review, which would make its way to me. So we eliminated some of that by doing a two-step process. We hadn't done an online process until COVID. That is the way Rehoboth does it as well, although they don't have the two-step, they just have one step.
Thank you.
Give you an idea of the numbers.
I have an additional number at the time of your test for 20,000.
Can't hear that.
7,000.
In 2020, what we're hearing is that they, the, the parking issued 7,262 parking tickets.
Right.
So about half of them, I think you can assume that about, you know, it's close to half.
Yeah, okay.
I thought it was everyone.
That's correct.
Just one, one other question?
Yes, sir.
With respect to the charter, and I'm not arguing for this one way or the other, it's just a question, don't even need to answer it right now. What the charter says is the commissioners are authorized to establish an Alderman's Court. It doesn't say the commissioner shall authorize, shall establish an Alderman's Court. Does it really require a charter change is the basic question here, if, if, based on that language? Again, I'm not looking for an answer necessarily, but it just seemed to be a relevant question.
I, I think it's a very relevant question, and again, if, if the commissioners, after, after this process decide that they want to bring this up as a future agenda item, I encourage you to bring it up, and it's something that we'll address with the metrics and a full analysis.
Thank you.
Commissioner Givens.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate all the details that people provided today, and I think this is well timed, since we're considering what we need to have in our new building, and at the minimum, having Plexiglas between the defendant and the judge's bench is going to be key. If we could, when we start to consider the finances with this, could we see what it would cost to do electronic ticket things? I mean, the waitresses at all the restaurants now have electronic order takers, so can't our officers have something like that and be on the go? Maybe it's prohibitive, maybe we don't have bandwidth, but that was just if we could consider that as well.
You know, absolutely. I think it's part of, you know, not just looking at the metrics, looking at what we can or can't do, or authorize or authorize not to do, but we're going to have to look at an alternative approach to how we just, how we operate in general, if that, if there is a change. But that's not to say we can't look at that right now in terms of steps towards automating the ticketing process. Okay. Yes.
One point that, just as you put to the, the questions that you want to consider is that if you were to eliminate the court, who would deal with the parking appeals? And how that process would be handled?
Correct. Thank you so much. Without any other questions, we're going to move on to number two. Number two, Mr. Brady, thank you so much. Number two, discuss requests from businesses to operate on the beach and the process of how to proceed. I will open this up to Commissioner, to the town manager for further information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I've discovered with this, this coming summer, I'm getting a lot of requests for businesses on the beach, everything from volleyball instruction for, for kids, to skimboarding lessons, to dining, like picnics on the beach in the evening after hours, to yoga. So I really want to kind of throw that out there to the commissioners and let you know that this is going on, and I'm getting these requests. And I, I, I want to get some feedback. It doesn't have to be all tonight, but some feedback on how we want to proceed as a town. I think at some point, my personal opinion is, our current concession line- line and Dave Lyman's group down there pays a lot of money to do business on the beach. And currently, with the folks that we are allowing to do those businesses on the beach, it's a business license of $109. And you know, some of these folks down there are making well over $10,000 on the beach using our public beach for this. So I just I bring that to your attention. Just so I know what our town audit says, but I I I just think that I'd like to get some feedback on how you'd like to proceed with folks coming to to us and applying for these to do these events on the beach.
Thank you, Mr. Zolber. Any questions from the commissioners?
Yes, you know, some people look at it as a service when there's a business on the beach, and other people look at it as commercialization of the beach. And there needs to be kind of some equity, right? If you say yes to one group, then you kind of have to say yes to every group. And I think some people kind of have concerns when they feel like there's too much sometimes commercialization. But other people like the service, you know, whatever the service is. So I don't really know how we navigate the whole thing. And to your point, you know, Liam does pay, I think it's, you know, 70 grand a year or something like that, and I think they technically have right of first refusal for any type of business as part of paying that fee. So like if someone was doing one type of business, I think they have the right to say, hey, we'd rather do that, and that's ours to make money for that type of business. But I don't really know how to navigate to allow people to kind of be treated equally and yet respect people's over commercialization concerns.
Thank you, David. Commissioner Persinger.
Uh, when we discussed this, I think at the last meeting, our town solicitor made a comment that there were some limitations on commercialization or commercial use of the beach. Uh, just wonder if you have any more detail you could share with us about what those limitations might be.
Thank you, Mr. Persinger. I don't I don't think there there's any more detail other than the commissioners as a as a group or council as a whole in the future should be hearing these requests or applications to conduct business and authorize them or not authorize them. So there's a comprehensive uh, kind of a a look as opposed to sort of an ad hoc analysis of each application. And one of the considerations is is going to be to what extent is the public beach rendered inaccessible to people who are accustomed to walking down their particular street and having access to areas that are now commercialized. So it can get very complicated. We did have a kind of an issue with this years and years ago, maybe early on in my involvement with the town that resulted, I think, in just a dialing back of of authorizations.
Well, I thank you. I appreciate that that response. I guess my feeling is that we really should hear from the public on this. I mean, you know, it's the public that that uses the beach. And, you know, we've we've done this for certainly for the Bay Beach rules that that were developed, we had a public workshop. You know, I think we should open this up as much as possible to to get some public input on this and you know, get a sense of what direction the public generally would like us to to go with respect to additional commercial activities on the beach.
Very good. Any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, that's always a sticky subject here, like what's commercialization, like David was saying, and and what's, you know, it's a public beach, right? It's not our beach, it's the public's beach. I I look at it from a standpoint of, all right, there's we have the hours that the lifeguards are on duty, and that's for you know, that's for people using the beach all day long. Maybe we can block out sometimes that, you know, people want to do a wedding at five o'clock on a Saturday. Well, besides a wedding, what other are allowable types of events that we can have there? So someone wants to have a picnic on a beach at five o'clock. Okay, well, you mean, we can define the hours, and then we could also define the activities that we think are reasonable. You know, so I I think a lot of that discretion belongs to the town manager on, you know, what you think is you know, you know, obviously, you're going to receive phone calls if someone, hey, they're throwing a, you know, beer pong event down. I'm like, no, that's not acceptable. Can't do that. So but you have to, you know, I think we can define a lot of it and leave it up to the town manager's discretion.
And Commissioner, you're also proposing that it fall outside of the hours the lifeguards are on duty.
Right, sort of like we did with the Bay Beach, you know, there's no dogs on a beach while a lifeguard's on duty. Well, when a lifeguard's off duty, what what is, you know, allowable? Like, we have a curfew for the beach. What is it, 11 o'clock? I'm off the beach way before 11, but 1:00, 1:00. 1:00.
Town manager, just a quick question. So if I, not that I'm getting, I'm already married. If I for marriages on the beach, is there a permitting process?
There's there is. And you and they pay correctly for wrong, Kate, it's $100 to do that. Now, we have people that are running a business all summer down on the beach and only pay a one time fee of $109.
Okay.
So so maybe I should come back with also a fee structure for some of these individuals also that are are making some some significant monies on on the public beach.
So somebody could pay $109 and have yoga every Wednesday morning at 9:00 for the summer? Or do a children's volleyball camp from 8 to 10?
So they're doing it, you know, the one that I proved that's been approved over the past years. They have a session in the morning and a session in the afternoon from Sunday through Thursday. And they have a maximum of 200 kids at $60 a kid.
Wow. My goodness.
Not all at one time, but they run that kid during that week. But just and and if I give approval for that group, and I have another group come in and say, well, hey, you've done it for them, and I want to do the same thing. So I'm just I think Commissioner Persinger's thing with the public input, I think will will
It's a good idea.
will be good. Yeah.
Yeah, especially if we approach the summer to be cognizant of of these potential issues and to get a handle on it. I mean, not that we want to be looking at a income type of tax, but it's a usage of public space, and what does that really mean? Okay.
And avoiding setting a precedent that we don't want to sustain.
Correct.
What one other one other comment?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I mean, clearly, we need to look at the the times for these kinds of activities. And and with respect to weddings, I don't consider that really a commercial activity. That's, you know, it's a one off event, and you organize, you pay a fee, and I don't think anybody's really making a profit off that per se. Uh, but I think we should have some consideration of the types of events that we believe are appropriate as well. And I think there was some discussion of camel rides at the last meeting. Is that something people really want to see on the beach? You know, I'm not sure. And that's the value of public input could be very helpful there.
Yes. All right. Any other comments? Let's do some research. Let's put in and put on next agenda to to look on how to proceed. Number three on our agenda, discuss a possibly vote approved ordinance to amend section 167-18 violation penalties of the Code of Town and Dude Beach to increase penalty for noncompliance of accommodation tax remittance. You know, this was put on the agenda for the commissioners to have a conversation to understand if it is sufficient and determine, especially as we're rolling into the implementation of new software. Uh, and what I believe the conversation that we had last time is to identify those who may be not complying with law and moving forward on that, as well as maybe not for this night evening's topics, potential liens for those. So I'll open up the commissioners to weigh in on the current ordinance and whether or not there should be a revision to the ordinance.
We're looking at version two, because there were two versions on the website.
So so if I could, yes, please go ahead. So as as you said, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Ms. Banazak made a presentation last month, and some questions were raised about the appropriateness of the fine structure that we had in order to to enhance compliance. And what we found was, or what we find is that the current ordinance imposes a 10% per month fine, which were that to compound, that could result in potentially a fine that is so it it could build up so quickly that a court might look at that and say that that's that's not appropriate, and that's unconstitutional. And so an examination was done of some neighboring jurisdictions, which found that that they had a similar fine structure, except their percentage was one and a half percent a month. So then the question became, should there be a flat fee, a flat fine in addition to or as an alternative to this? I think the recommendation that you're, well, the recommendation you're getting is is the second version, which reduces the 10% per month to a more reasonable one and a half percent per month, which is in line with other jurisdictions. But then it it it's not actually increasing the fine, but we've identified that failure to obtain a business permit despite conducting business results in a $500 fine. So really, all we're doing is we're we're taking that language, placing it here to give the public and staff a you know, a a better look at what the what the fine structure is. So this this does require a amendment to the ordinance, but it's not technically increasing the fine. It's actually just demonstrating what the fine is. And secondly, it's getting us out of an issue we could have possibly had regarding a 10% compounding fine, which is arguably not constitutional. The the other issue that Ms. Banazak raised was look, the one and a half, or in that case, the 10% fine that we were charging was was based on a figure that we didn't actually independently know. We had to ask the noncompliant party, how much how much revenue did you make from from renting? And then we would then calculate the fine. That's just not an ideal situation. So for obvious reasons. So this is meant to address that issue as well. So I I think there's two things, then. One is from a conversational, I understand, is it a 10% or something less than 10% to make it more reasonable, or do we move to this 500 plus one and a half percent a month? So I'll throw it out to the commissioners from a recommendation perspective.
I got I got a suggestion. So any contractor, if you're, and Jim, help help me out with this. If somebody, a contractor doesn't get a business license and performs work, what's the fine for that contractor?
$500.
I think it doubles, right? Doesn't it go from like three to six or something like that?
That's the permit.
Permit, right?
We can charge, and that's a
Can't hear Jim.
Sorry about that, Commissioner.
Sorry.
Yes.
I believe we can charge up to $500 for a fine for not having it, and it's rare that we do. But what we can do is charge twice the fee. For example, if the cost of the permit is $1,000, we can double the fee for doing work without a permit.
I mean, I mean, the goal is to have everybody, you know, follow the rules, right? So but if the fine isn't significant enough, there's no need for people to follow the rules. You know, you risk it. So I I'm in favor of the fine being what we would charge any other contractor. You know, let's do the 500 and double the fee. At least we're consistent.
You can do a stop work order.
A stop work order, right?
It's consistent.
So the the issue with doubling the fee is ra is raising the issue of what is the fee to begin with? So the the fee for a building permit, for instance, is something that's got to be represented. Somebody's got to come in and say, this is the cost of the materials, this is the cost of the service, and then there's a calculation. When it comes to accommodation tax, it's it's not easy to calculate it.
So to Commissioner Bauer's point, $500 is more than most people would pay for the rental license unless they had an extraordinarily large number of bedrooms. I, for the record, I think this is a a reasonable approach. Setting kind of that initial $500 clip level says, hey, you know, we want you to be part of the system, and we want you to kind of do the right thing here. And $500 is a nice kind of round figure that people are like, yeah, I don't really want to get nailed on that. So.
Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, the $500 fine already exists in our current code. Under section 117, you're required to get a a business license to rent your property. Any violation of section 117 is subject to a $500 fine. So anybody who who rents their property without a rental license is already subject to a $500 fine. And then with respect to the one and a half percent per month and not having the base for that, I mean, every every other municipality that has an accommodations tax like this is is in the same situation. They they are, they must rely on self reported figures, self reported totals of gross rental receipts from the property owners. And, you know, I I think this could be done in a couple of stages. We already have the $500 fine in the in the statute in section 117 for not getting a rental license. Uh, we could also establish a fine for not submitting a rental receipts report. Uh, and that rental receipt, that would be, we could require that that report be signed. Um, and the figure that is reported in that report would be the basis for calculating any percentage penalty that would be charged on the accommodation stacks, too. Uh, but again, our our situation isn't unique here. It's the same as every other municipality is in, and those municipalities have something in their statute that requires the owner to provide a a report on the the gross receipt so that you know what the basis is for the tax.
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Persinger, I think it's a it's a great point that you bring up. The one thing I I'll if you if I remember correctly, and Ms. Banazak can let me know if I'm wrong, is that the output of what will come from the accommodation software will also estimate the amount of the revenue that was that is achieved per property based upon opener, for example, weeks that are open, etc. Which is she shaking her head, Gary? Yes, that's correct. There there may be a way, and I can think of it, the only thing I can think of as a as logical approach or similar approach is that the state of Delaware, when it's imposing tax on public company stock, they put in a a value, an overall value of what they believe the stock is valued is what in terms of the the total market cap. And they apply a percentage to that, and you are required to go and submit proof as to why it's less. And it may be that we can attempt to use this approach of when those letters going out, if this is approved by the commissioners, that it's $500 for not submitting, potentially not submitting the amount due to the town plus one and a half percent of our estimate, allowing them to come back and show us the actual amount that they collected. So just a thought process, I'll throw that out from a commissioner's perspective. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Agreed.
So Mr. Persinger's Mr. Persinger's point was that that the $500 is already existing law. So I I think I think the code should be amended to reflect the existing penalty. So are there the 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 question is, are there three components? One is first, you have a component of of a fine for which Commissioner Persinger has has noted is the $500 is not getting a business license. The second is a $500 penalty for not submitting your returns. That's I was just put that out as a, or is that to?
Well, you know, sorry, kind of backed up from the microphone. My perspective on this is anyone who gets a rental license pretty much submits an accommodations tax form because they kind of know they're on the list that the accommodations tax form has to come in. I mean, I can't imagine there are people who are doing it, tell me if I'm wrong, guys, but I just would think that you pretty much always get it. There may be under reporting, but they
There there are examples of people who pull the permit and then report no income and then try and pull the permit the next year. And I think the way we treat those is going to be a little different than we have in the past.
Okay.
We're going to change our application forms and require people who do that to give a certification as to as to what their revenues were. If they say their revenues were zero, and you know, unless we can prove otherwise, then the there would be no fine. I mean, you could pull the permit and not rent your place for any number of reasons. But but if if they do respond that they rented it, then they're subject to a $500 fine before we issue their their subsequent or their next year's permit. And we do a calculation in addition to that based on the appropriate interest rate that you all determined to apply to the revenues that they represent they they had in the previous year.
Does anybody have a motion?
Well, what I I sort of feel like I sort of feel like we're not really ready. We don't have the all the pieces of this well pulled together at this point. all the pieces of this well pulled together at this point. There's another piece of this that I want to mention that is a little difficult to interpret. If you look at the language on violations in section 117, it talks about a $500 fine for violating any section of 117. But then it also says that each day that violation continues to exist is a separate violation. So read in a, in, in that way, you could say that you're subject to a fine of $500 per day. Not sure that we intend to do that or to levy something like that, but I think it's language that should be cleared up. It seems absurd, but there is language in the, in the town of Fenwick Island code that actually talks about a penalty of $250 per day for violating their licensing requirements. That's, that's pretty stringent. I don't know if they actually follow through on that, but that is the way their code reads. Again, what I was suggesting is that we have an existing $500 fine that we require this rental tax report. And if they don't file that, and that would be a certified report, then that would be subject to an additional fine. Doesn't have to be $500. It could be $100. It could be $200. But that, that provides some additional teeth. And then whatever it turns out to be. Rental receipts turns out to be, then it's
Gary?
100% per month until they, they're paid up.
We apologize, Gary, but Kate hit the power cord and so we lost you for 10 seconds. So can you go back 10 seconds to?
Yeah, Kate said you heard.
Probably the most articulate statement I have ever made, so I'm sorry.
You were rolling there, Gary.
My, my, I, I said earlier, there was some language in one, one section 117 that says that there's a $500 fine for violating anything in that section. And that each day that the violation exists constitutes a separate violation. So read in that way, you could, you could be fined $500 per day. I don't think we intend to do that. But in fact, if we don't intend to do that, I think we ought to think about cleaning that up. There is an example, as I was saying in the Fenwick Island code, where they do actually have a $250 per day fine. They say that explicitly for violating the licensing requirements. My suggestion here was that we recognize there is a $500 fine for operating without a business, without a rental license, that we require a rental tax, a rental gross receipts report that would be certified by the, by the owner or, or the owner's representative. And if that not providing that, that would be subject to a fine as well. Doesn't have to be $500, could be $100, could be $200. And then that there would be a, a one and a half percent per month charge on the original amount of the accommodations tax too, for every month that the accommodation stacks remains unpaid. That was, that was my suggestion.
And I thank you for saying it twice. We heard it once, but it was a very good suggestion. I, I, I will put, so I'm looking towards Ashley about adding the idea of reviewing chapter 17, 117 in next month's meeting to make sure that we clear up that from a, from a code perspective. But what I've heard is a very good suggestion from Commissioner Persinger to look at amending the current ordinance and applying a administrative fee. And you know now we have a business license penalty separate administrative fee. We're going through the process plus one and a half percent. So if we can come to an agreement on that, we can move forward on a motion in terms of what is that, that fee structure? Yes, Commissioner?
One other suggestion, that is, given that I think there are some things that could be cleaned, cleaned up here, there is a possibility of kicking us to the charter code committee for their recommendation if commissioners thought that that was a, a worthy way to go.
I'd like to have it in place before summer, but.
That, that was my only concern as well is by, by punting for a month, do we lose the ability to kind of have it impact this year? I mean, we could, the, the one, the one thing that I say, I mean, I appreciate Commissioner Persinger pointing out that we've already got the capacity to do the $500. We could, we could, if people think it's the right thing to do, and it's really a Fred call, is just eliminate the first part of the red text that says, you know, the assessment shall be $500 because you already have this. The assessment shall be just say 1.5 per month, you know, and that, I don't know if that sufficiently cleans it up or not. We talked about potentially some additional administrative step. I don't know if we have to do that or not, but it's just a thought if we wanted to have it in place for the summer.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, I, I guess it.
Is that right?
Taxes are due to the fall.
That's a good point. I mean, you fill a form in spring, but it's nothing, right? Because no one rents.
All right. So let's.
We'll give it a month.
Bring this to a conversation you want to?
Why don't we table this until next month's meeting? Is that fair?
Fair.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We'll table until next month's meeting. But in the meantime, are we going to ask for this? Well, it can't be on your charter code review.
It could be added as a discussion item. They could, I believe, agree to have subgroup work on it and come back with a recommendation at their, their next meeting, which would be in May. So that's, you know, that's a possibility if you'd like to, like them to consider that.
I, I, yes, I believe we would. You know, part of the intent of looking at this in, in unison of bringing this software in town in place so that the, those that live here understand the full ramifications of not being properly licensed and or reporting. And we know that our lovely press will help us communicate that out to the rest of the community that this is in the works. Okay. With that, number, I forgot to put my glasses on. Life court. Number three has been tabled, so we'll move to number four. Discuss a possible vote to approve an ordinance to amend 158-11, booting and towing of vehicles, the code of the town of Dewey Beach, to permit the towing of vehicles occupying a parking space designated for lifeguard use without authorization. Town manager, a little background.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So what we would like is the ability not only to ticket, but also if we feel it's necessary to tow a vehicle. So during a normal summer day, there may be multiple spots on the street where a lifeguard to park, and that's fine. If the parking, if somebody's in that parking spot, we can write them a ticket and leave it there. But during our busy, busy weekends, when there's no spots for these lifeguards, when they pull down there, we may end up having to ticket it, wait, and then tow the vehicle. And all we want to do is have the option to tow when necessary.
Your request is reasonable. I'll motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Not seeing any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Number five on the agenda is review the March 22 financial statements. This was, Ms. Hall had let us know earlier this, this week that due to the fact that this is the eighth of the month, we have not had enough time to close the financials. So they will potentially be reviewed if we can add them on the 20th agenda or on, we'll review the full year as well as the month of April in the May gen- in the May agenda. But I'll, I'll discuss it with the commissioners in terms of whether that's something that we want to amend the April agenda for. And just for the public record, the reason why we're not having a meeting next Friday is because it is a, is Good Friday, and that's why the, this meeting was moved up to the eighth. Number six, town manager comments.
Real quick, half of our money is spent so far. We expect to get the other half of approximately $108,000 to $107,000. We expect to get that before the month of June. County funds, the RTT funds, $142,000. I have to have that listed in by May 31st. And right now we're looking at approximately $50,000 to $60,000 for, for possible 800 megahertz radios for the police department to bring us up to where we should be. The chief is working with the Delaware Communications folks right now to see if we can do a one for one with the old ones, not have to spend the money for that. But I'm, I'm going to be looking at that, some of that money being spent there. A vehicle probably for the lifeguards in the next year for that also. Radios, and then a vehicle for our building official. Also, that would also act as a second vehicle for our maintenance team in case the primary, so when, right now, like if our vehicle goes down, we have to go rent a vehicle. And try to find one that has a trailer hitch to move our equipment around and try to find one that has a motor drive if necessary. But we'll also look at a, a second vehicle, some of the RTT money. Also, while the camera rides, I know Commissioner Persinger brought this up. I've decided against that for four reasons. One, the safety of the rider. Two, the safety of the folks on the beach. Three, we have so many dogs on the beach, it's going to cause a huge issue. And then the waste from the animals on the beach and getting it cleaned up. There's just too many things. As much as I think it'd be pretty cool for the town, we, we're just not going to be able to do it. Then the, one of the last things is I may have misspoke. It's for like the volleyball on the beach with the camp that's being run right now. It's 60 kids and $200 a, a kid. And they usually max out. So any questions?
Any questions for the commissioners? Not seeing any, move on to chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to give you a quick report, we had a lot of police officers that attended training two weeks ago. We got some CPR done for the season and the pibulator training recertification done. As Bill said, I've been working with Dibcom. There's a new radio standard coming out on, on the 800 megahertz system. It's been probably about 20 years now. We've had the original radios in 2024. They have this new P25 standard, which a lot of our radios are going to be obsolete and have been coming off the state network. Working with them on a one for one swap, on which radios qualify, very intensive, but it's got us. It's got our inventories up to date and matching estates. So like I said, whatever's not covered under that, we'll be asking him to use our Sussex County money for upgrade communication. One of the things my command staff has talked to me about, our current seasonal radios, did they use? When they get farther away from the police department, they can't hear. Their, their strength's not there. There was talk about putting a repeater system, but you've got to have it placed somewhere and it's, it's really cumbersome to design a system. So we, we could eliminate that problem by going to the 800 megahertz for them also. So we'll have everybody on one channel talking to each other. And then finally, I've got Captain Warren coming in the middle of the month to do some in-service training for my men. So we'll try and get majority of our training out of the way before summer really kicks in and gets busy as worse.
Wonderful.
That's where we're at.
Any questions from the commissioners for Chief Mack?
I do want to say one thing real quick to the commissioner. I'm pretty much lay up on what we've got here in the state of Delaware on communication. When the judge was talking earlier about the handheld units, I'm not aware of any police agency in the state of Delaware that has a handheld unit per se. And the problem is we're hooked into the state network and Bill could tell you, like the towns got their own system. We're part of the state network on the police side and we're managed by the state. And so, so if the officer goes to issue a citation, he's got to be actually into the state network on whatever device it is. Right. And right now, like even a speeding ticket, when you see the officer go back to the car, he's actually on the state network on that computer issuing that, which automatically transfers to the courts. And even their, like when they're doing an accident report, everything we do anymore is on a computer, except their local stuff, which they've got a ticket book with them. And they can write down the information, give the violator their copy, and then turn it into the court. So they've not had to do the manually input on that. We can certainly look into it, but you know, from the police thing, police aspect of this, you know, I'm sure we could work on a way of reducing. But if we had a, somebody come in here and commit a crime and I go get everybody's name and they plead not guilty, I'm going to need you to back me up as witnesses, which means we got to go to court. For you folks that live in town or there are visitors in town, we got to go right up to town hall and go to court. If that thing moves to the Willows, which is up there at Red Mill Pond, then we, you know, we, we've, we've all got to go up there. So that was the biggest feedback I heard from my staff is, you know, taking the officers out of town and, and going through that traffic. So I just wanted to, you know, share that with you. I mean, we can adapt and make whatever work. But as far as like in bar closing time, if I've got officers tied up that have to bring them back to the station, then they've got to log them in. They have to log all their contacts where, right now, they can just issue them a citation on the street, kick them loose, and I've got the manpower. I'm not losing them all to brave. So just wanted to share that.
I think that one of the comments is, is for us to always remain in the forefront of technology and to make sure that we're, we're up to date with, with our systems.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Bauer?
No, no comments.
Commissioner Givens?
I have some updates from the DLLG meeting that was had, held on March 24th in Dover. This may be known to all of you, but I'm still learning, so I'm going to report it back anyway. The infrastructure funds that are coming in through the federal government can be used to fund the electronic vehicle charging stations. And they can also be used for water, water infrastructure efforts, which you, you knew that. That's good. Homeland Security Grant, they're done annually. And there might be a way for us to get some funding to do parts of the new building. For example, we could do reinforcement of doors or windows, entryway security, multiple, this one, chief, I like this one, multi-discipline emergency response vehicle. Those are all things that we can get funding for here in Dewey. And South Bethany and Ocean View have done some successful grants, so that would be somebody to reach out to, to see what they did.
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Bauer's spoke to me to say he has a comment.
I forgot one, one big thing, you know, next, next Saturday, you know, next Saturday, we have the Easter egg drop. So the Easter bunny will be here next weekend.
I'll take it off my list.
I've heard from, oh, that was on your list?
Yes. Commissioner Juzinski. Commissioner Persinger?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. I just want to thank the, thank the town manager and the town staff for the monthly newsletter. I think it looks great. There's a lot of good things happening in town. I think it's very important to let as, as many of the public know as possible about those good things. And secondly, again, I want to thank and congratulate the town staff on the effort to, to ramp up the activity in, in acquiring grants. Always a good thing if you can use other people's money to, to do things that are needed in town. So it's a really good effort. So thank you very much.
Great. I just have a few things on my list and it's just to, to communicate out. One is to, to confirm that DB did comply with all of the issues associated with closing out. And so the closing out of that chapter of our Dewey life is finally over. The, the town manager, and I believe also Mr. Dees went down and counted spots and made sure that the shed was gone. So, and, and that thing was properly marked. So glad to know that that is in the rearview mirror. Yesterday, I attended a meeting for the Association of Coastal Towns. This was, it was a good meeting. But in case you get any, if there are any questions or comments, the major topic was on the wind farms, the offshore wind farms that are coming from, from Maryland. The probability that they're going to hit land through the Indian River inlet. And what are the next steps, if there are any next steps that can be done by the coastal towns and, and how we're going to move forward? And I just want people to understand that this is, and I think this is what, a conclusion after 30, 40 minutes is that this land has been leased by the federal government to these wind, wind companies. It's happening. So there's nothing that anybody of, from a marital perspective at any of those towns can do anything different to change the course. And as we sit on one side and talk about global warming and climate change, to say that you don't want wind farms is a contradiction. So just as a.
How far off the coast are?
I believe it's 29, 25 miles still.
So often, one off of here, which is Horsted, 17 miles. The ones off of Fenwick are going to be between 17 and 21.
So 17 basically is almost over the horizon.
Didn't Fenwick?
When you look at Cape May, New Jersey at night, that's 17 miles from Lewis. These things are going to be 800 feet high, which is almost.
80 stories.
Yeah. You're going to see it.
We may see them on Dewey Beach, just with the way that we're angled compared to where Fenwick is, we, we may see them. But again, they're, they're, they're coming. I, I do want to acknowledge that yesterday was the second anniversary of passing of TJ Redifer, one of our commissioners and mayor. And Paul did a good job as well as his family coming out and saying, thank you. Such a great man, friend, friend to us all. I will, this is a personal ask. I will not be able to attend the ACT meeting on May 5th, which will be in South Bethany. So I'm asking one of the commissioners who can, tend to, to go to my proxy and just throwing that out. Our next meeting is April 20th, is a special meeting on the calendar. And that's all I have.
Is that meeting on the 20th going to be virtual or in person?
I, I was, probably it would be virtual because it's in the middle of the week. That's okay.
I, I just saw on the announcement, I wanted to clarify.
Five, five. Five, five.
Five, five.
Yeah. Is that, is that okay if everyone, if it's a virtual meeting on April 20?
As long as I can have, so I can call.
Yes.
For phone.
Yes. Yeah.
I have to use a landline.
Okay, so we'll just do a Zoom meeting. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Mayor, I just, so there will be fireworks tonight over the Rehoboth Bay. It's a private event. Denrec in the in the fire marshal has approved it, but it has nothing to do with the town, but everybody in town's going to hear. Thank you, sir.
And I heard it was 9:45 as opposed to called 8 o'clock.
Well, can I have a motion to convene the April town commissioners meeting?
I'd like to adjourn it instead. I move that we adjourn, sir.
I'll second.
I'll second.